Test one, two. Good afternoon, welcome to the Revere Zoning Board of Appeals. Would we please rise and salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call of the members of the Zoning Board of Appeals, Mr. Hamdan. Here, Mr. Lemina. Here, Mr. Lopes. Here, Mr. Pelton. Here, Mr. Tuck, I'm sorry, Mr. O'Brien. Here, and Chairman Tucker.
Here.
Here, quorum is present. First item on tonight's agenda, this is continued from the meeting of May and June. Sumaya Albani 226 Rumney Road requesting a variance regarding minimum parking requirements to enable the appellant to convert a single-family dwelling to a two-family dwelling.
Is the applicant or representative in the audience? Okay, seeing that it's still a public hearing, I'll ask if the counselor wishes to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. So on this, I would request for you guys to deny this. They are in the process of applying for the accessible dwelling unit, and they're no longer going to be going after variance for a two-family. So, please and thank you.
Okay, seeing that this is a public hearing, I would ask if there's any proponents. Seeing in hearing now, close that side of the hearing, any opponents? Please press the button and state your name and address for the record.
Marcia Rivera Ragusa, 29A Rumney Road. Directly across the street from them. That's what I'll say? How's that? Did you get the address?
Yeah.
Okay. I continue to be opposed. There's other avenues that they can take for their objective, and we've been here now a few months. So I think it's time we table this.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents? Seeing in hearing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Any members wish to speak? Is there a motion to deny? Motion denied, seconded? We ask for a roll call, please. Okay. All righty.
Shall the Zoning Board of Appeals grant the variance for 26 Rumney Road? Mr. Hamdan. Yes, Mr. Lemina?
This is to, can you explain?
Okay. Just to explain again, the question always has to be in the affirmative. So the motion by Chairman Tucker was to deny the application. So it would be, shall the Zoning Board of Appeals grant the application? A yes vote would grant it, and no vote would deny it, okay? Shall the Zoning Board of Appeals grant the variance for 26 Rumney Road? No. Mr. Lemina? Voting no, Mr. Lopes. No, Mr. Pelton? No, Chairman Tucker?
No.
No, the variance shall be denied. Next application is A 2214 Cavalo Corp., requesting two variances from the Zoning Board of Appeals in order to enable the appellant to construct a duplex dwelling on Lot 17 True Street.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Attorney Lawrence Simeoni with Law Offices at 300 Broadway, Revere, Massachusetts. I represent the City of Cavalo Corporation of Somerville, Massachusetts. Seeks a variance in accordance with Massachusetts General Law 48, Section 10. Specifically, the property is Lot 17, True Street. It is in the RB district, and it's a vacant lot. It's 5,315 square feet. It consists of 77 feet of frontage, both on School Street and on True Street. The pro project before you, the request before you, is to build a two-family duplex. And we seek relief in accordance with 1716040, which is the minimum lot size necessary for a duplex. The law requires, the current ordinance requires 6,000 square feet. We have 5,315 square feet. We also seek a variance with respect to 1716040 relative to setback in a duplex. Most of yous can recognize that a duplex is usually, one is a little bit adjet to the other. In this particular case, we will be presenting a, and building a duplex that will be straight across, not staggered. So we need a request for variance. The last request for variance is 1724010, deals with the number of stories. Now, in the RB district, the height is 35 feet. This proposed structure will be 26 and feet, 10 inches. The proposed story in the RB district, number of stories it can have is 200, 2 and 1/2 stories. Because the existing foundation exceeds 60% of the area, 1724010, I've established as footnote number 10 in my application, requires a variance because now it's three stories. With respect to the proposal itself, my client's been a builder for a very long time. He has worked in the area, and he is very familiar with this particular duplex that he is proposing. It's going to be a modular duplex. He believes it is efficient, and it's, will be able to be placed up very fast. He anticipates that the number of units will be actually...
I'm sorry, I have to interrupt you. The lady in the back there, the acoustics here are very bad with the air conditioning, so I ask that you please take any conversations out of the room. Because we cannot hear up here with the people talking in the back. With the air conditioning, it's very difficult. So if you need to speak, please take it out of the room. Thank you.
So, moving forward. The proposed duplex, as I said, has a height of 26 feet, 10 inches. Again, well within the 35-foot height requirement. It'll have, it'll be modular with three stories as a result of the slight increase in the basement foundation. It'll have two units, one bedroom in each. It'll have a living room, kitchen, full bath and half bath. My client is building this structure for two employees that have worked for him many, many years. These two employees, he's building so that they can have their first home in the United States. And the first home, needless to say, in the Commonwealth in the city of Revere. I hope the board will consider the recommendation of approving this particular variance and the unique triggers, if you will, of requirements of a variance dealing with a duplex. Had this not been a duplex and was just a regular two-family, we would have avoided two of the three particular variances requested. I'll answer any other questions, Mr. Chairman, you or the members have.
Seeing that this is a public hearing, we will ask if there's any other proponents? Anyone in favor? I noticed that the ward counselor is not in the audience.
I can tell you for the record, Counselor Powers is in favor, but I can only tell you for the record...
You can only tell me that. He has to speak for himself, sir.
I understand.
If we'd like, we can table this and take it up when the counselor arrives. What's the will of the members? Okay, we'll table it until the counselor arrives.
Thank you.
Or continue?
Next application is A 2215 Nixon Jimenez, 114 Augusta Street. Seeking a variance for no more than two parking spaces shall be allowed in tandem for a two-family to enable the appellant to subdivide the existing lots and create new lots A and B and convert a single-family dwelling to a two-family dwelling on proposed new lot A and a new residential structure on proposed lot B.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Attorney Larry Simeoni of Law Offices at 300 Broadway, Revere, Massachusetts. This evening, I represent the landowner Nixon Jimenez and seeks a variance in accordance with Massachusetts General Law 48, Section 10. Specifically, Exhibit 1 establishes the property in this matter. It consists of two lots, 718 and 719, 4,705, 4,375 square feet with 50-foot of frontage in the RB district. There exists a one-family dwelling improving the premises that was built in 1910. Also, it should be noted that most of the area lots and buildings consist on properties approximately with 50-foot of frontage and 87 feet in depth in the immediate area of this particular structure. My client seeks to convert a one-family to a two-family, and he's done that by seeking a variance in accordance with 17240702, which basically says that if you, three cars in the front yard, that you need a variance. I have submitted to the, to the board, through the clerk, a particular plan, amended Plan 1, and I have a copy for the board, but I think Chairman wants to decide whether he's going to allow the copy to go to you, but it has been filed with the clerk.
You submit with the clerk. Where it wasn't submitted within seven days?
Okay.
We will be continuing this, but you can proceed with your converse, your speaking.
So when, when you do eventually see the amended plan, you'll see that the three spaces in tandem that were encroaching on the front yard, we simply moved them back. So, basically nullifying the need for this particular variance, in my opinion. However, I have discussed this matter with the chairman of the Site Plan Review Committee. He has a different opinion. He seems to think that anybody who puts three cars in tandem requires a variance. Now, frankly, I find nowhere in the ordinance where it says that. I do not find any zoning ordinance in the city of Revere that says if you park three cars in tandem, that you require a variance. With the exception of 1724070A, which says you can't do it in the front yard. So, I've also want to bring the board's attention to this, and I'll probably file a supplement. I'd ask you to look at the accessory unit dwelling law, 1725030. In that particular law, it clearly says that an accessory unit parking space may not be created within the front yard, but may be created within the side yard to allow up to three vehicles tandem parking. So that is probably the only piece of legislation that's before you in the zoning law that affirmatively states that three parking spaces in tandem, if you qualify under the AUD, you can do that. So, at this point, I agree with, I've agreed with the chairman. I think that if you'd be so kind, Mr. Chairman, to continue this matter and refer it to the city solicitor, I think we can make some progress, and I appreciate that very much.
Okay, seeing that it is a public hearing, I'll ask if there's any other proponents? Anyone in favor? Hearing and seeing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Are there any opponents, anyone opposed? If you like to step up to the microphone, you may, well, you do so. Just for the record, this will be asked to continue because he submitted a new plan. He didn't do it within the seven-day timeframe, so this will go to our next hearing next month, which will be on September 21st.
I'm actually a little confused by the whole thing.
Okay, could you please state your name and address for the record?
Mike Recchi, 115 Augusta Street. I live right across the street. I'm confused by the whole thing. It's legal to put two two-family houses across that street? There's enough land to do that? We're not even arguing that? That's already done?
They're asking for variances, like it said in the plan.
For driveways, not houses, right?
They were asking for a few variances. For tandem parking. That's it. That's everything else he goes, he has a matter of right.
There's enough room to put two two-family houses?
Yes.
I've lived there for 70-something years. Well, my father has. I'm 43 years old, I've lived there. The guy that owned the house couldn't split it. How can it be split now?
They changed the ordinance for townhouses, not, what, a few years ago? So that's probably what this is relating to.
So the guy that sold the house, that got it gifted to him, he didn't want the extra $500,000. I'm just confused. It's going to be, it's going to be an absolute disaster on Augusta Street. Augusta Street's a runway. It's a dragway. They do 80 miles an hour up there. You're putting four families...
He would be complying with zoning, and the only thing they'll be asking for are variances for three tandem parking spaces.
Right, I understand that. But it's also, I live across the street, so they'll be parking on the street when people come over. It's four families added to a house that had one person living in it their whole life.
That's correct. So you can be opposed to it, most definitely. But we will be continuing this, so please come next month as well to speak.
Okay.
All righty. Are there anyone else in opposition? You can wait to speak, or you can speak now? Is there a motion to continue this to September 21st due to the filing of a late document? And you would have to be bringing that counsel, you would have to bring the lodge document to the city clerk so that we can look at that? Because the one that is, was sent electronically, we can't see.
Yes, we will do that.
Okay.
Next application is A 2216 Dion Kriger, 453A Broadway Everett, seeking a variance of Section 1728030, minimum parking space dimensions to enable the appellant to convert the existing single-family dwelling to a two-family dwelling at 70 Ridge Road.
Hello, everyone. My name is Dion. The button is on, right? So Dion Kriger, I'm representing Mr. Mendez from 70 Ridge Road. And our intention here tonight is to seek a variance for parking dimensions for the reason it would be a conversion from a single family to a two-family. But before we get into the, I would like to speak a little bit about the property itself because it's a new ownership. It seems that before these, Mr. Mendez bought this property, it was some issues related to the basement, like illegal unit in the basement. And once he bought the house, he has, right now, a permit under, it's under construction, actually, to do a whole renovation. And in the process of doing this renovation, due to the slope of the side of the, you know, the property has a slope towards the back, which kind of, the whole lower level is, it has almost a unit only zone because it has egress all over, you know, windows, doors. So this, the lot itself helps to have a, another unit in the basement. But he obviously, he didn't care, so he just went ahead and put a permit to do a renovation in the basement and first and second floor. I can show you pictures so you guys can understand the quality of his work or investment that he's doing to the property. And, just give me a second. Is that okay to approach?
I don't want to interrupt you, but we strictly, this is not a city council meeting. So you just speak, you speak on the zoning issues, and that's it.
Okay.
Because we only give you three minutes at that mic, so if you don't, if you don't put up your three minutes for the zoning, you just ended up gaveling us to have a seat.
Sounds good. Sorry, I didn't know that. So, yeah, our intention is to have a conversion from a single to a two-family, and our issue is not within the property itself, or interiors or exterior. We're not going to change much, or anything at all on exterior. The issue is the parking lot. We need four parking, and right now, we intend to have four parking tandem, two and two tandem, but we're short of parking dimensions that we need, we're short about three feet and one, three feet in the back. So the length of the parking is, cannot achieve that. Although we can fit four cars in there, Mr. Mendez is already parking four cars there. And, you know, I don't, you know, I don't think this is going to be detrimental to the neighborhood to a point that we can still fit four cars, but we're seeking just a few feet on each parking lot to achieve the goal of what we're looking for. He can always do, like I said, the slope of the property, it's on his favor, but also at the same time, it's against him because the parking situation right now is on a retaining wall. So he could achieve the length by building a new retaining wall, but it would be like a 20-foot-high retaining wall to extend only like four feet to achieve the extra feet for the parking lot. So it would be, cost very, you know, hardship for him to move on in that direction. So that would be great to have the variance granted for the, that's the only thing we ask, parking dimensions.
I will ask if there's any other proponents? Anyone else in favor?
Received an email proponent, James Stole, 62 Ridge Road. He said he could not attend tonight's meeting, but is in favor of the variance. Ward four?
No, who's this? Keith. Okay. All righty, are there any opponents? Anyone opposed? Seeing in hearing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Any members wish to speak?
Yes, hi. From the way I look at the parking places you provided on the plan, it looks like you're going to be parking on the sidewalk. The one back-to-back, you don't have enough room for that.
Well, because of the, you know, it's 18 feet long, so a car is not 18 feet long. So, yeah, if you look at it that way, yes. But we are trying to get a, you know, I have pictures that showing that we can fit four cars without crossing the sidewalk. You know, a car is about 15 feet long, so we will be able to not park it on the sidewalk. That's what I say. But, yeah, if you look at the dimensions of, or length of a parking, yes, they will look like, yeah.
Do you have any pictures showing the topography going down in the back?
Yeah, I do, yeah.
Because this retaining wall, I didn't think you would have to go down 20 feet to extend it to the four feet, but...
Yeah, yeah.
With these pictures? Could you tell us what the current retaining wall height is?
What, height?
The height of the current retaining wall, going from that, the three landscape timbers up.
Yeah, it's about 18 feet at least.
And what were you saying that as far as a substantial cost? What would it cost to just go 18 feet and extend that retaining wall? Pin it off the existing retaining wall?
Well, I don't know, maybe a good 30 grand, $30,000 to do it?
Anyone else wish to speak?
Did Ward Counselor Keith hear about this?
He has not, he hasn't given an opposition. He wanted to see what the public is speaking on it.
Okay, because I went by there today, and it seemed pretty small. It's a small parking lot. I don't know if there's any resident sticker allowed in that area?
That, I don't know. I don't know.
Resident stickers throughout the city.
That's right.
Throughout the city. Since no residents oppose to it, I'm for it, but I would say no resident sticker for that neighborhood. Parking's pretty tight over there.
Oh, I understand there is stickers throughout the whole city.
Throughout the whole city?
Yeah.
No, I would put a restriction on it, Mike. Non-resident sticker with tandem parking over there. Oh, he's texting Keith.
I, myself, think that they should build a retaining wall, and I mean, for $30,000, they're getting an additional unit there. Is this unit for rental?
Potentially, yes. Yeah.
So over the years, I mean, you're eliminating, you're eliminating...
May I ask the owner, he's there, I believe, because it's like, what do you?
You have to address the microphone, state your name and address for the record, please.
Sorry, when I purchased the house, I purchased for me and my family. My name is Wagner Mendez, I live in 70 Ridge Road. And I wanted to put a kitchen down in the basement, but because of the previous, you know, they, I had an illegal apartment there. So when I went to the city to pull the permit to do the work, they said I couldn't have a kitchen there, only a small sink. And then the city attorney, she told me, why don't you try to convert the house into a two-family so you can have a full kitchen there? Because it's, it's actually a full apartment. The ceiling's eight, more than eight feet high. I have four sliding doors, I have a egress window, I have everything that it needs. But at the moment, I just want, I'm just looking for comfort for my family, to have a nice area in the back, and I would love to have a kitchen down there. And the only thing that it's, doesn't meet the code is the three feet that we are short on the driveway, but we can still fit the four cars there without interfering the walkway. So I don't even have the four cars to put it there. I only have two cars anyways, but I wouldn't be parking on the walkway or anything.
Okay, could you tell me who took the pictures for you for this that were presented to us?
I did it.
Okay, there's four cars in that picture.
Yeah, I asked my neighbors to put the cars there.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, just to show that I can fit the four cars without being on top of the walkway. Back-to-back, yeah. Oh, no, but there's room around the cars, just not in the back. But between the cars, there's enough room. All, all, it's pretty, it's pretty wide.
Yeah, we have a 22-foot, 22-feet driveway, which, they only need about nine feet each, so...
Okay, anyone else wish to speak? What's the will of the members? Is there, yes, a motion? Please make a motion. Are you offering a, could we do a restriction for just a two-family dwelling for the? That would be, that would be a first if we take away the, I mean, we do that for lodge developments, but for two-family home to, to have parking, I think the parking department would not be in favor of that. So is there a motion to approve? Motion to approve, is there a second? Okay, so I would state that you want to... It's the rights authorized by the variance on, okay, we have standard ZBA conditions, and I'll read them out so it doesn't have to, for every one of them. Number one, it's the right authorized by the variance are not exercised in one year of the date. The grant of this variance, the right shall lapse. The variance shall not be valid until the appellant has recorded the variance and the plan at the Suffolk County Registered Deeds and submits documents, recording numbers, and dates to the city clerk and building inspector of the city of Revere. The applicant must receive site plan review approval prior to applying for a building permit. The last one, which we will not be putting here, is mainly for lodge developments, and that's, that the property would not be eligible for participation in the city of Revere residential and our visitors' on-street permit parking program. So we would be doing the first three as far as your site is concerned. Now, what would you, what would the roll call be to?
The board's looking to approve this, subject to the motion. Shall the Zoning Board of Appeals grant the variance requested, subject to the conditions as read by Chairman Tucker, conditions number one, two, and three? Mr. Hamdan?
No.
No, Mr. Lemina?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Lopes?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Yes, and Chairman Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, the variance has been granted, subject to the conditions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Next application is A 2217 Revere Dev LLC, 304 Squire Road, requesting the following variances to enable the appellant to raise the existing structure and build a new fast-food restaurant with the drive-through window at 304 Squire Road.
If we can, just because Counselor Powers is in the audience, should we go back and take up?
You've already...
Okay. What do we do if he comes in the audience? Will we? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Don't let her, let her present it again, please.
This was for the True Street?
Yes.
Yes.
The Zoning Board of Appeals is reopening the public hearing for A 2214 Cavalo Corporation, 70 Victoria Street, Somerville, Mass. This was in regards to the construction of a two-family duplex on Lot 17 True Street.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm here tonight in support of that particular project. I was down there the other day, and I looked at the... I was down there the other day, and I looked at the area, the land. I understand it's going to be a two-family, and I think the main bone of contention here is the fact that it needs to be a duplex. And is the, is the developer here? Could you come up here, please? My understanding is this is going to be a modular?
That's correct.
Okay, now, is there...
That is correct.
Yeah, is there a marriage wall between the...
Yeah, so be, there's a full firewall between the sides.
Yeah, that was, that's one of my concerns.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, that, that was one of my main concerns, to make sure there was a, what they call a marriage wall in the modular business, which actually is a firewall between the two locations, between the two units, rather. I've looked at it up there, I think supporting this also will bring some more tax revenue into the city. Right now, it's a vacant lot, and if and when this is constructed, it'll be, I would imagine, in the $6,000, $7,000 area for additional tax revenue coming into the city. So, I'm supporting that, and I understand these gentlemen, I've talked to them before, they've done work in other communities, in the Winchester area, and I'm sure this will be a nice project. One of the things I've asked them to do is make sure that, that fence, that stockade fence that's around that, it can be, just fix it up a little, so, not the fence itself, but the area, so it shows a nice view from Broadway and School Street and True Street when you're coming into that area. So, again, I'm here tonight to support that.
Are there any other proponents? Anyone else in favor? Seeing and hearing, not all close, that side of the hearing, are there any opponents? Please state your name and address up on the microphone, please.
Angela Ortiz, and I'm the owner of Nine True Street, which is directly next door to the lot. In fact, the lot used to belong to Nine True Street years ago. My concern with this is the, the variance that is not able to build a duplex on less than 6,000 square feet exists for a reason, and it's not a huge lot, and to put a house that close to my house on a street that has become extremely congested, the parking is everyone from Broadway and from School Street where there's no parking parks on True Street. And so, the idea that there would be even more cars on our street is just very difficult to process. Also, the height of the building, it's going to completely block all the light that I get in my house. I have a beautiful view of Broadway and the hill right now, and I realize that that's not necessarily to do with the zoning rules, so I can't really talk about that too much, but the parking is something. There's a reason that there's not supposed to be a building like that on a, on a piece of property that's smaller than 6,000 feet, and it's because of the congestion, and that's my main concern. And so, if there could be some kind of a parking restriction and not take the spots away from the people who live in my house, who rely on parking in front with their parking permit, one car per unit, that's all we have, but it's just, it's concerning to me.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other opponents? Seeing and hearing, not all close, that side of the hearing, are there any members wish to speak? What's the will of the members? A motion? Motion, it's either a motion to approve, motion to deny, motion to approve? Subject to the standard ZBA conditions, if the right authorized by the variance is not exercised within one year of the date of the granted variance, the right shall lapse. The variance shall not be valid until the appellant has recorded this variance and plans into the Suffolk County Registry of Deeds and submits all documents and recording numbers and the dates to the city clerk and building inspector of the City of Revere. The applicant must receive site plan review approval prior to seeking a building permit.
Shall the zoning board of appeals grant the variance, subject to the conditions set forth by Chairman Tucker? Mr. Hamdan?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Lemina?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Lopes?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Yes, and Chairman Tucker?
No.
No, the variance has been granted. Application A 2217, Revere Dev LLC, 304 Squire Road, requesting the following variances to enable the appellant to construct a new fast-food restaurant. Minimum aisle dimension of 22 feet for two-way traffic, and minimum parking requirements for a fast-food restaurant.
Good afternoon, Madam Clerk, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. My name is Chris Kreidler, I am with Diambrosio LLP. With me is Marion Diffen, the, one of the engineers on the project. This actually comes to us based upon a grant of the special permit allowing the use of a drive-through window at the fast-food restaurant. I believe that was done on May 23rd by the city council, they did grant that special permit. What we are seeking today is the, is a reduction in the number of parking spaces from the required 13 to nine, and we are also seeking a reduction in the width of the travel aisle, I believe, towards the rear, sorry, towards the rear of the property, leading to some of the parking lots. The goal, throughout the process of the special permit application and the hearings there, we had the opportunity to speak with many of the community, and they had actually preferred to have a group, or a, an ability to have a buffer between the Derby Street wall and the travel lane for the property itself. If necessary, we can actually add the four additional spots in that particular buffer, because it's not required as part of the ordinance. But we want to try to accommodate the community as best as we possibly can. In terms of the width of the travel lane, which is located towards the bottom of the site plan there, that is also in an effort to accommodate the community as well. We did have, we wanted to make sure that we were in accordance with the required 10-foot buffer between the rear property line, which abuts a residential property, as well as the dumpster as well, which is located there. We certainly would invite any questions from the board, from Mr. Chairman, we are happy to discuss any of those items with you. Thank you.
Seeing that it's a public hearing, I will ask if there's any other proponents? Anyone in favor? There anything in the, that was sent to us? No? Okay. Are there any opponents? Anyone opposed? Seeing and hearing, not all close, that side of the hearing. Any members wish to ask questions?
So, you would enter through Squire, you would enter in Squire, through Squire Road and exit through Squire Road?
Yes, the only entrance and exit is actually through Squire Road, that was done with the input of the community as well. I believe the initial plan had some exit going out onto Savoni Street, but the community decided that they did not, they did not particularly like that idea. So, all entrance and exit is done through Squire Road.
Great, thank you. And can you elaborate on why you can't add those four parking spaces?
We can certainly add those four parking spaces along the, if you look at the right side of the, of the site plan. Those are, there are four spaces that we can put in there as a parallel parking, but based upon our conversations with the community, when, during the process of the special permit application, we learned from the community that they would prefer to have that buffer with vegetation and some, just additional, just trees and grass, and just vegetation that's available along that buffer next to the wall, next to the fence that is along Derby, Derby Road.
Okay. Okay, so you'd be putting nine parking spaces on the property. What is the seating inside?
The seating inside, I believe the seating inside was a total of, I believe it might be 14, 14 to 18, but I am not immediately certain. One thing I will notice is that the special permit application for the use of the driveway, it actually cited a separate volume amount, which indicated that was one, one parking space per every 1,500 square feet. The property itself is 1,900 square feet, which came to a little bit, a little bit over 13, so the required parking is 13 spots, but we are seeking to move forward with nine. And partially, the reason is because the majority of the business is done through the drive-through, and that's been that way for many, many different fast-food restaurants, specifically since the pandemic.
Okay, thank you. What's the will of the members? A motion to approve? With our standard ZBA conditions, if the right authorized by this variance is not exercised within one year from the date of the grant of this variance, the right shall lapse. The variance shall not be valid until the applicant has recorded the variance and the plans in the Suffolk County Registry of Deeds and submits documents, recording numbers, and dates to the city clerk and building inspector of the City of Revere. The applicant must seek site plan review approval prior to applying for the building permit. As for a roll call?
Shall the zoning board of appeals grant the variance requested, subject to the conditions as read by Chairman Tucker? Mr. Hamdan?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Lemina?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Lopes?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Yes, and Chairman Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, the variance is granted.
Thank you very much.
Next application is A 2218, Silk Haird Harvest LLC, 259 Oakwood Ave, Revere, Mass., requesting the following variances to enable the appellant to raise the existing structure and construct a 16-unit residential structure at 5 Washington Ave, asking for minimum rear-yard setback requirements and side yard, maximum floor-to-area ratio of 1.5, and respect to minimum screening area width of six feet between unenclosed multifamily parking for budding residential uses.
Okay, seeing that these, we still have a lengthy agenda, I am going to do the three-minute presentation, and then anyone else coming up for proponent or opponent will have the maximum of two minutes, so...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I will be as brief as I possibly can. Christopher Kreidler, Diambrosio LLP, on behalf of the petitioner, which is Silk Haird Harvest, and also CEM Construction. The developers, as well as the engineer and the architect, are present to answer any questions if necessary. What we are seeking in this property is to build 16 one-bedroom units essentially right along the border with the Chelsea, it's right on Washington Street at the Chelsea border. In fact, the portion of the property actually is located in Chelsea, and we are working with Chelsea to address any of the potential concerns regarding the portion of the property that is in Chelsea. This is a local company, CEM, they work out of Revere, and they are looking to build this as a legacy property. We, they initially reduced the number of units that they were, they were looking to put initially, from 24 to 16, so that we could actually accommodate the required parking for the, for the residents and the guests, according to the ordinance. There are 24 parking spots for 16 one-bedroom units, which I believe in the GB district is a 1.5 ratio, so we certainly have enough parking for the property. The, the, sorry, the relief that we are seeking are, is relatively minimal in terms of the distance for the setbacks. I believe it may be any, less than one foot for both the front and the side setbacks, perhaps even less than, perhaps even less than six inches in some circumstances. The other is the buffer and the FAR that we are seeking. We believe that we may be able to reduce, reduce the number, the size of the setbacks if necessary. However, we want to make accommodations for a margin of error as well, so that's why we're seeking the minimum setbacks for the side and rear setbacks. The, and the FAR as well, I believe the new architect is able to provide new plans with a FAR of 1.4 rather than the 1.53 that I believe you have currently. The, the other relief that we seek is strictly based upon trying to accommodate the amount of parking. The property, if you look at the top of the, top of the site plan, you see that the parking spaces actually go all the, all the way to the rear property line, so that we can accommodate necessary parking, so that there are no, there's no necessity for parking, for parking in the street in either Revere or in Chelsea. So, I will certainly leave that forward to, to you all, if you all have any questions, I'm happy to answer. We also have the professionals present who can answer those questions as well.
You did good. Okay, are there any other proponents? Anyone in favor? Hearing and seeing, not all close, are you a proponent in favor? Please step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Elphineesh Franciske, 12...
Okay, you have to speak into the microphone for the acoustics here, I'm sorry.
Elphineesh Franciske, 12 Haskell Ave, Revere.
And you are in favor?
No, I'm not.
I asked for proponents, if anyone is in favor?
Oh, I, I apologize.
Okay.
Thank you.
You can stay right there, and I'm going to be asking for proponents. I'm sorry, are there any other proponents? Seeing and hearing, not all close, that side of the hearing, any opponents? Could you please move the microphone right over, so that you can speak directly into it? Thank you.
Sure. So, I, I live in Haskell Ave.
Okay, your name and address for the record.
Elphineesh Franciske, 12 Haskell Ave, Revere, Massachusetts.
Thank you.
As is, it's a congested area, and there's a lot of parking problems, and my backyard is Chelsea, and beyond my backyard is the, well, in front of the property that we are talking about, it's the New Bridge Cafes parking lot. So, as is, there's a lot of parking problems, it's congested, and that area is not monitored by Revere, or nor Chelsea, so it's a concern.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other opponents? Hearing and seeing, not all close, that side of the hearing, any members wish to speak? Okay, you have to speak.
What's the opinion of the Ward Council?
She's, no opposition. So, I would ask for a roll call on approval, and with our standard conditions, with the no parking. So, I'll read out the standard conditions. If the right authorized by the variance are not exercised within one year of the date of the grant of this variance, it shall lapse. The variance shall not be valid until the applicant records the variance and plans in the Suffolk County Registry of Deeds and submits documents, recording numbers, and dates to the city clerk and building inspector of the City of Revere. The applicant must receive site plan review approval prior to applying for a building permit, and this property shall not be eligible for participation in the City of Revere residential and visitors' on-street parking program. Is there a motion to approve?
Shall the zoning board of appeals grant the variances requested, subject to the conditions as read by Chairman Tucker? Mr. Hamdan?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Lemina?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Lopes?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Yes, and Chairman Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, the variances have been granted. Next application is A 2219, 55 Walnut LLC, requesting multiple variances from the ZBA to enable the appellant to raise the existing structure and build a five-story, 30-unit residential structure at 55 Walnut Ave.
Good afternoon. State your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Nancy O'Neill. I am an attorney at Diambrosio LLP, located at 14 Proctor Avenue, Revere, and I am joined by our architect for this project, David Barsky. So, I'll try to keep this brief. Our proposal today is to raise the existing two-family structure, which is located at 55 Walnut, which is around the corner from Shirley Avenue, and construct a new development at the property.
I can hear you, I think.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Could you push it further?
My client has recently acquired this property and is prepared to design for a contemporary residential structure to include 30 units. Among these units are 21 studios at an average of 300 square feet, and nine one-bedroom units at an average of 500 square feet. And these are smaller units, we do not expect families or multiple people to be living in these units. This property is located a convenient distance from the Revere Beach MBTA station and MBTA bus lines 110, 117, 411, and 411... bus lines 110, 117, 411, and 426, so this is a transit-oriented development. We do not expect tenants to have cars. Our developer entity includes Mr. Jamie Russo, who is also here tonight, and he has policies in place to restrict cars at the premises. So we do not anticipate having any impact on the neighborhood as to parking or traffic. We have discussed the project with Ward Counselor Ira Novoselfsky, and we have hosted a community meeting where the project was well-received. The City of Revere has previously supported these projects in the Shirley Avenue neighborhood, including several of my client's projects, and we believe that this project will further revitalize the Shirley Avenue neighborhood. And for these reasons, we believe the dimensional and parking requests are reasonable, so we are happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
Attorney Jerry D'Ambrosio.
Great to the microphone, please, because of the acoustics in here.
Attorney Jerry D'Ambrosio, I just wanted to state for the record that Counselor Ira Novoselfsky was going to be here tonight to express his support for this project. Unfortunately, he had an emergency situation just before the meeting and was not able to be here. Hopefully, he was able to connect with.
He has made us aware.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. State your name and address.
Good evening, I'm Sullivan, 3501 Revere Beach Parkway. I'm here in favor of this project. The revitalization of Shirley Ave. is really on the up and coming, and the developer's done amazing work there, and I fully support this project, sir.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Hearing and seeing, and I'll close that side of the hearing. Are there any opponents? Anyone opposed? If you please step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Most definitely. If you just, now if you press that red button and just speak directly into that microphone, we should be able to hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
There you go. So my name is Alisa D. Dominicus, and I represent my uncle, Joe Hurwins, who lives on the adjacent property at 53 Walnut Avenue. And my uncle, who is actually here in the room, is very much opposed to the project based on the variances that are being sought after, particularly the significant deviance in those variances from what's legally required. And while I know that parking isn't really on the table or a big point in question, the property across the street from my uncle, the Hyman Towers, is a very busy street with emergency response and workers and visitors, so the people that live there taking Ubers and visitors will also add to the traffic on that street, which is worrisome to my uncle. He's been there for 60 years, and I was there for 25 years. I moved out a while ago, but still continue to see him, and we very much appreciate the revitalization of Shirley Avenue and are full support of it, are just not in support of the building.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents?
Good afternoon. My name is Laura Holmes. I live at 243 Campbell Avenue in the Shirley Ave. neighborhood. Thank you for letting me speak this evening. I'm a little nervous, but I'm here because I've seen this developer put up, you know, I believe more than 300 units in that neighborhood, and it gets cited for all the good things about the revitalization of Shirley Ave., but I hear from a lot of residents in the neighborhood also about the amount of displacement. These buildings are, they all share similar characteristics. They generally replace single and multiple-family dwellings that isn't going to get replaced elsewhere in the neighborhood in favor of these similar microunit, clearly not housing that is rented by people who have lived in the neighborhood for generations, and so it's changing the characteristic of the neighborhood. They all request the same variances to make much, much more dense buildings with more people, and I don't object to it per se. What I object to is that with these hundreds of units changing the neighborhood and no thought by anybody in the mix, the developers or the city council, or with all due respect the committees involved when granting these variances, what opportunities we're losing to build affordable housing. And I know that a lot of people in the city, included elected officials, care a lot about affordable housing, but they haven't, you know, because we haven't adopted the inclusionary zoning, you know, the city council felt they could get a better deal from developers, but what I see us getting so far is no deals from developers. There's no affordable units being built in the Shirley Ave. neighborhood with all the property, little by little, being gobbled up. And so I understand that this board does not make policy, and the counselors and other elected officials with the, working with the mayor, need to do that, but I would ask, please, to, one thing that you all can do is put a pause on these developments. Someone has to help lead the way so that we can not miss the opportunities to preserve our communities and to provide a mix of affordable housing, just of these 300 units, if we had even 10% affordability, which is far less than what the mayor had proposed.
I'm not disagreeing with you, and I got to cut you a shot because, again, it's not pertaining to the zoning issues, so I apologize, but I have to cut you a shot.
Well, there's limited places for residents to raise our voice, so.
That's true.
Thank you for giving me the time.
Thank you.
There's a lot of people who feel the same way I do.
Most definitely. Thank you. Are there any other opponents? Please step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Fatu Drami. I live on 30 Park Ave., Revere. I work with an organization that is in Shirley Ave. neighborhood, especially on Walnut Avenue, and I'm concerned about the displacement that is happening in Shirley Ave., but also the overcrowding that is happening there, because you have this small plot that was housing maybe two families, and now you're building 30 units there that is going to be housing more than 30 people. And even though it's saying that there's not going to be any parking, but we all know that people who moved in the neighborhood comes with their cars, and you can stop them from coming with their cars, even though you will not give them parking stickers, but they will still park there. I have been working in Shirley Ave. since 2004, and it's a place that I call home, even though I don't live in that neighborhood, but I work there, and I go there all the time. Now, whenever I'm there, I can't even park on the streets, so having 30 more units on that street is going to cause more parking congestion, but also overcrowding, and I am concerned about that. Development is good, but development that is displacing people is not something that I, you know, I kind of support, and I am really concerned about the changes that is happening in Shirley Ave., because this overcrowding, the number of people that are coming, is going to be using more of the city's resources, even if you pay taxes on those properties.
Okay, you're getting off the subject as far as zoning.
Yeah, I'm just expressing my concern, and I understand that this is not the place for you guys to make any changes, but this is a concern that I'm expressing, and I know this is not the only property that is being built.
Okay, but I have to cut you off now, then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other opponents? Hearing and seeing, and I'll close that side of the hearing. Are there any members wish to speak? Okay, is there a motion to approve with our standard conditions? I'll read the conditions. If the right authorized by the variance are not exercised within one year of the date of the granted variance, the right shall lapse. The variance shall be valid until the application and the appellant has recorded the variance and the plans in the Suffolk County Registry of Deeds and submitted the documents, recording numbers, and dates to the City Clerk and Building Inspector of the City of Revere. The applicant must receive site plan review approval prior to applying for a building permit, and this property shall not be eligible for participation in the City of Revere Residential and Visitors On Street Parking Permit Program.
Shall the zoning board of appeals grant the variances, subject to the conditions as read by Chairman Tucker? Mr. Hamdan?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Lemina?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Lopes?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Yes, and Chairman Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, the variance has been granted. Next application is A 2220 Eastern Equity Partners LLC, requesting multiple variances from the ZBA in order to enable the appellant to raise the existing structure and build a five-story, 20-unit residential structure at 38 Walnut Avenue.
Good evening.
Okay, please speak right into the microphone. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Nancy O'Neil. I am an attorney at D'Ambrosio LLP, located at 14 Proctor Avenue, Revere, and I am here on behalf of the applicant, Eastern Equity Partners, and Mr. Jamie Russo. This property is located very close to the property previously discussed. This is going to be at 38 Walnut Avenue, which is closer to the intersection with Beach Street, but it is still a very walkable distance to Shirley Avenue and its amenities. Our proposal today is to raise the existing two-family structure and construct apartment units on the site. These will include 20 units with 11 studios at an average of 400 square feet and nine one-bedrooms at an average of 465 square feet. And again, these are smaller units, and we do not anticipate families or multiple residents in these units. This is a transit-oriented development, very close to the MBTA station and bus lines 110, 117, 411, and 426, and the developer, Mr. Russo, has policies in place to limit cars at the property.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Just for the record, the ward counselor is in favor of this. He did do some serious negotiation with these parcels, and they have had meetings in the area as well. Are there any other proponents? Hearing, and I'll close that side of the hearing.
Laura Holmes, 243 Campbell Avenue. I just want to go on record opposing for the same reasons. More small tiny units, no affordable housing, no family housing, and no consideration for the community preservation of that neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents?
Fatu Drami, 30 Park Avenue. Just wanted to go on record again, just to say that I'm opposed to this thing again because of the same concern. It's the same street now, it's going to be more than 60 units, and that's overcrowding, that's too much.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing and hearing, and I'll close that side of the hearing. Are there any members that wish to speak? Is there a motion to approve? With our standard conditions that I read previously, I'll recite them again. If the rights authorized by this variance are not exercised within one year of the date of the grant, then this variance shall lapse. The variance shall not be valid until the applicant has recorded the variance and plans in the Suffolk County Registry of Deeds and submits documents, recording numbers, and dates to the City Clerk and Building Inspector of the City of Revere. The applicant must receive site plan review approval prior to applying for a building permit. This property shall not be eligible for participation in the City of Revere Residential and Visitor On Street Parking Permit Program. As for a roll call?
Shall the zoning board of appeals grant the variances requested, subject to the conditions as read by Chairman Tucker? Mr. Hamdan?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Lemina?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Lopes?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
And Chairman Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, the variance has been granted. Next application is A 2221 1499 LLC, requesting the following variances from the zoning board of appeals to enable the appellant to raise the existing structure and build a five-story, 38-unit residential structure at 1499 North Shore Road.
Good evening.
Good evening again. My name is Nancy O'Neil. I am an attorney with D'Ambrosio LLP, located at 14 Proctor Avenue, and I am here on behalf of the applicant, 1499 LLC, and our proposal today is very similar to the previous two buildings discussed. We would like to construct apartment units at 1499 North Shore Road, which has long been used as a parking lot for businesses on nearby Beach Street. My client has recently acquired this property, and the proposed building will feature an attractive contemporary design with 38 units to include 36 studios at an average of 375 square feet and two one-bedroom units at an average of 515 square feet. The average rent for these properties will be about $1,500. Unlike other buildings, this is a transit-oriented development. It is 300 feet from the Revere Beach MBTA station and located near bus lines 110 and 117. The developer entity involves Mr. Jamie Russo, who's completed multiple buildings in this area. He has policies in place to limit cars at this building. Previously noted, we have worked with Ward Counselor Novoselfsky on this project, and he is in support. He cannot be here tonight. We also hosted a community meeting for this property, where the project is well-received by the neighborhood. The City of Revere has previously supported these projects in the Shirley Ave. neighborhood, which will contribute to the continuing revitalization of this area of Revere. For these reasons, we believe the dimensional and parking requests are reasonable, and we're happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Seeing and hearing, and I'll close that side of the hearing.
Again, Laura Holmes, 243 Campbell Avenue. I'm a resident of that neighborhood, and I want to go on record as opposing this project. I think that, you know, there should be a pause put on developments of this size to consider all the impacts on this neighborhood, and neighborhood impact is a very important thing, and I think you could deny the appeals based on the need for more of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other opponents? Okay, what's the will of the members? Motion to approve? With our standard conditions, if the rights authorized by this variance are not exercised within one year of the date of the grant of this variance, the right shall lapse. The variance shall not be valid until the applicant has recorded this variance and plans in the Suffolk County Registry of Deeds and submits documents, recording numbers, and dates to the City Clerk and Building Inspector of the City of Revere. The applicant must receive site plan review approval prior to applying for a building permit. This property shall not be eligible to participate in the City of Revere Residential and Visitors On Street Parking Program. I would ask for a roll call.
Shall the zoning board of appeals grant the variances requested, subject to the conditions as read by Chairman Tucker? Mr. Hamdan?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Lemina?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Lopes?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Yes, and Chairman Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, the variances have been granted. Next application is A 2222 Zappage Development LLC, requesting multiple variances from the zoning board of appeals to enable the appellant to raise the existing structure and build a four-story, 25-unit residential structure at 34, I'm sorry, 344 Salem Street.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. My name is Paul Teller, and I'm with D'Ambrosio LLP of 14 Proctor Ave., Revere, Massachusetts. I'm here representing Zappage Development LLC, who is the prospective purchaser of 344 Salem Street, Revere, Mass., 02151. He is looking to construct a multifamily residential building on 18,040 square feet of land. The building will be four stories, 25 units, which shall consist of 21 bedrooms and five two-bedrooms and 30 parking spaces. Currently, the property is being used as an auto-repair garage, and what my client is looking to do is to revitalize the parcel, to put an apartment building in. It is a transit-oriented parcel, is near the MBTA bus stop, approximately 250-foot walk to the Salem Street/Clifton Street stop, which has access to buses 426, 428, and 429. In addition to that, my client has held community meetings. He has spoken with Counselor Serino, and in fact, has reduced the proposed project from 33 units to 25 units based upon his conversations with the community and Counselor Serino. My client has developed other properties within the neighborhood, which have been favorable and which the other neighbors have been happy. We have some diagrams here. and which the other neighbors have been happy. We have some diagrams here. In addition to that, we also have the architect and engineer. Should you have any questions?
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Anyone in favor? Hearing and seeing, then I'll close that. Please step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Ardita Kraya.
You have to lift that up and speak loudly. Thank you.
Ardita Kraya, 1117 Mill Street Place. I'm pro the project.
Thank you. Please step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Bruno Labarete, and I support the project.
Okay, please state your address.
148 Breedenland, Revere.
Thank you. There are any?
Peter Veroni, 102 High Street. I support this project. He does great work. I've seen his work. I actually bought a house for my mom from him.
Okay, are there any other proponents?
Calvin Zarro, 248 Salem Street, Revere. I'm here to represent my mother, my family that's been in the area for their whole life. And we absolutely 100% support the project that's going on. I think it will benefit the area. I think it will benefit the City of Revere in whole. I think it will be an asset to everybody, and the developer has done numerous properties around the area that have all been successful. And on record, 110% in favor of him.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other proponents?
Ultimero of 191 Reserve Ave. I fully support the project of Mario. It seems very beneficial to the community, since there is nothing new on that area. So I fully support his idea and his project.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Seeing and hearing, then I'll close that side.
I just wanted to mention two other points. This current property right now is being used as a garage, and it was a gas station before. The current developer has undertaken the responsibility of remediating any kind of environmental problems that exist there. So on top of this, he's going to clean it up as well. During the due diligence process, it also became an issue that there was a drainage line that leads into wetlands in the back. This was brought up by Mr. Serino and some of the neighbors. It's currently crushed, causing some drainage issues on the upper side of Salem Street. As part of this project, the developer again is going to repair those lines and help alleviate the drainage issues that are there. It's important to note that Counselor Serino was part of these meetings and was part of the negotiation process, where the unit count dropped from the mid-30s, I think we were, to about 25 where we're at today. He's not here now. I do know he's--
Counselor, your attorney stated everything you just said very well.
Almost. But Counselor Serino's in support. That's my understanding.
And he voiced that. He did state that he's in support. Are there any other proponents? Seeing and hearing, then I'll close that side of the hearing. Are there any opponents?
Vanessa Via Sella, 10 Roberts Street, North Revere. I just would like to point out that everybody so far that's spoken as a proponent of this project doesn't live in our neighborhood and/or is probably a paid worker of the developer. I'll just point that out. I think one of them lives on Breeden's Lane. Everyone else doesn't even live with us. So that being said, let's talk about Counselor Serino. Counselor Serino is actually neutral in this situation. I just texted him, and he just responded to me to let me know that he's staying out of it. So I don't know where the support is coming from. He did mention that he did, he was in discussions with them about bringing the numbers down, and that's great, but it's still an outrageous project. So where are we at? We are at a square peg trying to fit into a round hole with seven variances. Ridiculous variances. 50 feet is one of them. 50 feet is one of the variances. This property is not irregular. Now, variances that, variances by and large have a criteria. Do they not? I mean, aren't they supposed to be given for certain purposes? If it's an irregular shape or if the topography is irregular, this is not the case. This is a rectangular-shaped piece of property that is by and large flat for residential buildings like homes, not an apartment building. This property is not irregular. There's nothing about this property that calls for a variance. Nothing. Nothing. The desire of the residents may not matter, and so the desires of the builders shouldn't matter either. There's a parking issue. There's a height issue. There's a closeness issue. There's a light issue. The traffic is a huge issue. And they can talk about parking spots and people not taking the cars all they want, but we all know the reality. We live in the real world, right? We're not in a fantasy. Each apartment is going to have at least two vehicles, and you can try to pretend that's not going to be the case, but we all live here in the real world. Now, like I said, variances serve a purpose. We're not talking about irregular land. We're not talking about topography issues. The only issue here is we just want to make sure that the purpose of, if you are going to give any variances, let's make sure that purpose is not to ensure the profit of the developer, okay? Because it's all we're talking about here. We're not saying that this ground is not buildable. It absolutely is, and we are all. If everybody from North Revere that's opposed to this, could you please stand up? We live in this neighborhood, not them. We live here.
Not me, really?
Yeah, you stand to make money on it, so you don't count. Yes, you do.
Okay, if you're going to stand up there and go back and forth with someone in the audience, I will cut it off right now.
Okay.
So please, direct yourself. If you're going to continue to talk, you'll be out of the chambers, please. Now, if you want to direct stuff to us, that's fine.
I will.
But we're not going to have a back-and-forth in the audience.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. So what we have is, the people that are proponents are either stand to make money off this or don't even live in the neighborhood. The ones that are against it are half the size of this room we're sitting in right now. We're the ones who live there. And like I said, there's no irregularities on this property. Not one. Not one. No variance should be given. That is all.
Are there any other opponents that wish to speak? Please state up. State your name and address for the record.
Michael Via Sella, 10 Roberts Street, Revere. This basically is, the reason for asking for these variances is for profit only, and I feel that the neighborhood is congested enough as it is, and I don't want to see a project of this size further congesting the neighborhood and putting a strain on the city's resources. And I'm against it 100%. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents?
My name is Mike Nigliozi. I own 347 Salem Street, right across the street from this project. I took a set of plans when we had this meeting in the park, and I looked at it. Number one, this woman that just spoke was right. There isn't 50 feet. I don't know why it's even approved so far. Number two, no indication of an elevator. You have a stairway on one side of the building, no stairway on the other side of the building, and if there's ever a fire, there's no second egresses.
That, I may agree with you on that, but it's not a zoning issue that we have to pertain to.
But isn't it code issues?
They'd have to build to the standard building code. So they'd have to build that under the building code. So they have to comply with that. That's not something that the state building code, they have to comply with.
Do they comply with the parking? I thought it was one and a half cars per apartment?
They're asking for a variance for parking. Yes, they are asking for--
I don't see why they should get a variance for that.
Please, counsel, could you move this so that people can get up to you easily? Thank Good evening. State your name and address for the record, please.
Jamie Vasquez, we live at 21 Clifton Street. So we're the buttress to the property. We're not saying he can't build what he wants to build, but within code. Build as much as you can build within code. That's fine, okay? But to give variances in a neighborhood, there is no parking. You can't park on Salem Street. Where are you going to park on Clifton Street? People already live there, park there. I've been sitting here for about, what, a couple hours now, and you gave everyone everything they wanted. If you were in that neighborhood, would you want that? I mean, really. On the long side of that property is my property. On the other long side of that property, which is not the street, there's a stream now. Does anyone know the setback to that stream?
Found the plans here, but you want to elaborate on it?
Yeah, so Massachusetts Rivers Act 1996 states it's supposed to be 150 feet from the high water mark in a densely populated area. Ain't even 150 feet there. So if it was a densely populated, I believe it's 25 feet between the parking, the stream that's there. There's ducks and frogs and all kinds of stuff. And the residents, we're there.
Okay, you have to leave the chambers, please, sir. I asked that you leave the chambers. If you're not going to respect this chambers, I'd ask that you leave.
So the guy--
We're not going to have anyone speaking out like that. If I have to call the police, I'll call the police.
The guy does a good job building. The property is huge. Let him build what he can build within reason. So at least the parking's good, and it's good. No one's opposed him building what he wants to build. I went and looked at the other properties he builds. They're beautiful homes. They're really nice. But within reason, everybody that comes to this council can't get variance for whatever they want. We have rules for a reason, so that we don't ruin good neighborhoods with these huge buildings and congest them like Shirley Ave. To, everyone has cars. All my--
Sir, I'm not going to debate with you on that, though. I am the most, biggest proponent, I mean opponent on vehicles, and I, look at the beach. I was denying everything, and look at it now. You don't have any problems with parking down there, so know your facts before you're going to say something. The same with Shirley Ave. So don't go saying, like, we're approving something, when that's not the case. We do our homework on it.
So if that's the case, that he should have no variances?
Is there any other opponents?
George Wolfe, I live at 109 Salem Street. The city has recently approved a 71 condo unit further up, back up on Salem Street. We were told it's going to be no impact of traffic. There's an impact before they even proposed that, as opposed to the nursing home. To get out of my driveway, any, just to come here tonight, it took me probably a minute and a half just to get out of my driveway. To add 30 more cars to that, and like the first speaker eloquently said, most people don't have one-car families. I think it's too much. The initial meeting I went to at the park, there was talk about if it's not residential, it could be commercial. I think the people in North Revere would like to see something commercial there. We are a very, very dense neighborhood, a high-traffic area, and like every other part of the city, there's just speed and it's rampant. I would say, I would be opposed to the variance.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Norma Tango. I live at 51 Granville Ave., Revere. The traffic is terrible. To get out of my street in the morning, it's like five, 10 minutes, just sitting there waiting to get out. If there's something happens on the highway, it's all directed over to Salem Street. The other thing is, North Revere is a beautiful place. I was born and brought up there. It was single-family homes, and it's still supposed to be single-family homes there. And they have built some beautiful homes up on Liberty, up on top of Granville. And we wanted to stay there like that. We don't want these buildings over towering these little beautiful homes. So we'd like it, if we could, build some single homes. Change it to two-family homes, but not four stories. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents?
Antonio Otero, 292 Salem Street, Apartment 508, in Revere, Massachusetts, 02151. I do oppose all the ordinances, I mean, the variances that they have requested today. We're here, I'm here as a trustee of 292 Salem Street, a 40-unit building. We have discussed within the building with most of the owners that I could reach. I don't have anything, right? I was not even prepared to speak on behalf of them. Thought it was going to be a different story here, but we all oppose. The whole building opposes, especially because of traffic and parking spots. We have a very limited number of parking spots in this building. We, for the record, are not allowed to have the resident stickers on that property. Not a single one of us. We cannot have any parkings on the street anywhere in the city, so, except the Revere Beach Boulevard. Of course, we were, I think everyone is granted that one. And also, we were just, we just received the final construction of parking spots that belong to the Northern Trail, which is the bike-to-the-sea trail that everybody might be aware of. And the city has constructed, I think it was like 25 or 30 parking spots that everybody's using now. I mean, we are trying to take use of that. We were allowed that by the city, and there are already parking wars happening there, not to mention the number of crime that has been increased. And we had, only in two weeks, we have 15 break-ins in our parking lots. People calling every time, and we do see that, we see that in cameras, we see that happening. And our concern is that the parking spots are not available on Clifton Street, because most of Clifton Street are driveways. I don't know if you know the area, but there's rarely a way for you to park right there, and not to mention the traffic. And if something happens on Route 1, everything, you know, whoever is going to Sago's and Lynn or anywhere else is going to have to be diverted to our area. And plus, as was mentioned before, there's another property that was allowed to be built there, like 79 more units. So we're going to have like hundreds of cars already coming down there, and that's already. I live on top floor, and I do see from my window a lot of near-miss collisions right coming from that intersection, because I see right intersection of Clifton Street with Salem Street, and I do see the number, I see cars stopped. I mean, I just get out of my house when I look at there, and then I say, oh, now it's clear now, because it's like insane most of the time, especially from Tuesday through Thursday, which is the highest traffic time. So that is, that's the way I oppose, and I oppose in the name of 40-unit residents in my building as a trustee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other opponents? Seeing and hearing, then I'll close that side of the hearing.
Can I speak?
No.
I'm sorry, Mr. Tucker. I'm a little slow tonight. Could you just clarify one position for me? Is Counselor Serino in favor of this?
Counselor Serino provided the meeting. He is neutral as far as he's concerned. He said that the meeting was, went well. They negotiated down, so they didn't go from one to a lower amount.
Okay.
I don't think he was even aware of all this opposition, this much opposition.
Well, I have his letter here saying he's opposed to it when we first had the meeting. And we had a meeting at the Harmon Park, and I was opposed to that, because we have our meetings at the Four Point Channel. We have them in the room. We had the nursing home. We had six meetings in there. We've got everything worked out, and we have a dozen items that we wanted to get worked out before this even came in front of you, and nobody bothered to do it. And it's not fair to the neighborhood when you can't get it. I like the developer. He's a great guy. He does great work. But we're the ones that have to live there and take the impact, and he says one--
You were all for it a month ago. You were all for it with Mario a month ago.
Sir, please leave the chambers.
You know what?
Please leave the chambers. Have respect.
You're a rat.
Please leave the chambers.
You're a rat, sir.
Please leave the chambers.
You were all for it, and now all of a sudden you're against it. That's because Jamie left. Now you're against it. Rat.
We weren't all for it that night at the park-- We weren't all for it that night at the park, sir. Okay.
Right.
With all the variance you have, right next to, within less than five feet, that's where all the wetland comes on the Salem Street and gets plugged up over there. And it's, and it's kind of dangerous. And he wants to put a wall up around Clifton Street? We all love that idea. I think we need to, I don't know if we can move it ahead or put it off, and have more of an input meeting where the people can talk about their issues and discuss them and say, this is wrong, that's right, this is wrong, and get on the same page. And that's what we were supposed to do. And all of a sudden, we end up in front of you guys and put you guys in the position of making the decision. And we're people that have to live there. And it, it's where it's built, it's where the kids get off at the bus stop, have to cross the main street at Salem Street, and work their way down Clifton Street. And, you know, it's, I think we need more talking and discussing before we get a decision. And I don't know if you've ever seen that or ever did a site visit.
I've done site visits, yes.
You've done that, and that, that always backs up, and the water comes across the trail and stuff. And that has to be addressed, and stuff like that there. And with all this, not enough space around each thing. That's why everybody's upset, because we don't understand the logic, or we don't see it in black and white. And when we had our meetings, we had it on the video, we could understand it a little better. And, you know.
Quite well taken.
I mean, I like-
Are there any other opponents here that wish to speak?
Phil Vernacchio, seventeen nineteenth Clifton Street. I've been living up there a little over twenty years. It's a nice street. I have a big driveway. My driveway's full. I have two small boats, two trucks, a car, a girlfriend that comes over. I have two spaces in front of my house. One of my tenants parks it, one of my tenants parks it in the driveway. There's maybe on the Clifton Street side, seven parking spaces on the street. Everything's driveways. Everybody took out the front of their houses and put driveways in. You put twenty-five units in there with twenty-five parking spaces, they're gonna park on the street. Who's to say someone's not gonna be living there as a boyfriend or girlfriend, they're gonna park their car on our street? Even if you do a non-resident sticker there, where are they gonna go? There is no parking on Salem Street, zero. So when you take the left on Clifton Street, only half the street's Riviera. The other half's Sogas. That's my, that's my opponent to that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Silas, three five oh one Riviera Beach Parkway. I think the neighborhood has spoken. I'm an opponent of this project, sir.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents? Oh, could you press the button, please?
John Ritchio, twenty-four Franklin Street. I'm unaware of any negotiations, at least with the residents. I, I, I didn't partake, and I just want to get that across. I was at the meeting at the, at the park. And the lawyers here said they had good reasons for getting, asking for seven variances, including the parking variance. And one of them was that without the oversized building, they couldn't make enough money. And another reason was, if you don't take this, you're gonna get something worse. That was another reason. And, and, and the third one was an excuse. Young people today do not drive cars. They take Ubers. Just look out the parking lot out here. And another thing is, there's no visitor parking considered. Where, where you should have, according to the Riviera Journal, two spaces per unit. They're about one point two, plus no visitor spaces. So I'm opposed to it for those reasons. Thank you.
Thank you.
How you doing? Robert Pumisano, thirty-eight Franklin Street. I'm just gonna oppose, I'll keep it short and sweet. I oppose the project. It's too big for what they want to do.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents? Hearing and seeing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Do members wish to speak?
Yes. I think the neighbor does, frankly, what they feel. So I think we have to move on to deny this.
Chairman, if you would continue, we'd be happy to meet with the neighbors again and to address any concerns they may have.
What's the wish of the neighbors? I mean, the, the, from what the ward counselor said is that there was a meeting that already took place. I wish the ward counselor was here. Unfortunately, he's not. But it's the will of the members. It's not, what's the will of the members? Is there a-
Mike, I would like-
Please step, please turn your microphone on.
It's on.
Oh, okay.
I would like to see him go back with the neighborhood, maybe work something out. If the neighbors, you know, will agree to that, I'm sure you guys can work something out. I mean, nothing's impossible. Something's gotta be built there in the future. And I'm sure Mr. Cepeda will, will try to accommodate you guys and take it on to the next, next meeting.
So is there, can I, I mean, there's any way you can revise the plan and provide parking or anything?
Well, it, it-
I mean, you've been working with the city and everything. You can go over there.
Okay, you would have to step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Mar, I'd be okay.
Well, you didn't get the thirty units, so we're gonna work something to make the neighbors happy.
He supported the twenty-five. So, and you know, none of those neighbors spoke about the sidewalks. Everybody's saying how dangerous it's gonna be, know how dangerous it is right now. And that's very sad, because what's there now, it's embarrassing to be next to their houses. And if they'd like to see that, do they really like to see that what's there now? You know what I mean? It's very, it's very like, if you see the new plans, I'm speaking very well English. If you don't understand my- So, you know, it's a beautiful building, twenty-five units, thirty parking spots. I've built so many buildings, one parking spot, I never had an issue. But you know what? A lot of people, they're afraid of the changes, you know? And when it's done, all those people you see here, they're gonna come and have a coffee with me at the project. You know what I mean? I mean, I met them so many times, they're never expressed this mad for no reason, you know? I, I built so much Riviera, everybody's happy.
Okay, but just-
So, thirty parking spots. So Ward Counselor agreed with me twenty-five units. I even begged him for another unit for myself, because you, you guys know I work in Riviera every day. And I live all the way far in Middleton. I want to have a unit to live there. He said, no way, Mar, you're gonna have twenty-five? I support twenty-five. I said, okay, thank you. We changed the plans. As you see, I spent so much money on the plans, you know? I cleaned up the place before was, you know, junk cars hanging around there, you know what I mean? Rats going around, the higher exterminator. Nobody say anything, thank you, Mar, you know what I mean?
All right, but that, you own the land, so, okay.
I think twenty-five units, they're already, you know, Ward Counselor agreed with twenty-five units, you know?
All right.
And that's why I did the plans. I put the beautiful sidewalks, nice lies, nice trees.
Please, what is the will of the members? So if there's a motion for continuation, please state it on the microphone so that-
Do you guys think you could continue this and compromise some way if possible?
No, you've already oppositioned, you've already stated your opposition. He was answering a question. He went on, but he was answering a question, so.
Okay, that's something you're, you're gonna have to work out with the developer. Maybe scale it down, I don't know. But is there a motion to continue on the floor? There's a motion to continue? Is there a second?
Then I would ask for a roll call for a continuation.
On the motion to continue the matter to the meeting of September twenty-first, Mr. Hamdan? Yes, Mr. Lemina? No, Mr. Lopes? Yes, Mr. Pelton? Yes, and Chairman Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, this matter will, will be continued to, to September twenty-first. Last application is A twenty-two twenty-three Olympia Development-
Daryl, are you gonna be vacating the chambers so that we don't have the noise? Two-minute recess, please. There we go, okay.
Next, that last application is A twenty-two twenty-three Olympia Development Corporation, sixteen oh five North Shore Road, requesting multiple variances from the zoning board of appeals to enable the appellant to construct a six-story, fifty-unit residential structure on lots one fifty-three, one fifty-four, one fifty-five, one fifty-six, and one fifty-seven at seven ninety-one Broadway.
Good evening, ZBA. This, my name is Attorney Jerry D'Ambrosio. I'm located at fourteen Proctor Avenue in Riviera, Massachusetts. I represent the petitioner tonight, a Mr. Vincent Decesary, who's also here, sitting in the rear. Mr. Decesary and the Decesary family is a longtime Riviera family. They own multiple properties, including the MGH Building on Riviera Beach. The petition before you has to do with the currently open lot at seven ninety-one Broadway. So seven ninety-one Broadway, for, for most of us, that's the empty lot next to the Vertuccio Smith Funeral Home. It's the current empty lot next to the Vertuccio Funeral Home. As many of you may know, the Vertuccio Funeral Home is relocating from that area. And that lot, which is owned by my client, Mr. Decesary, is up for redevelopment as a result. What Mr. Decesary is proposing is, in fact, a five-story, not a six-story, a five-story dwelling apartment building with fifty residential units. Of the fifty, there are twelve studios, twenty-six ones, and twelve twos. The parking relief, we're asking for one-to-one. So every unit will have at least one parking, one, one parking spot for each unit. So one car per spot. It's important to note that this is the general business district, so an apartment house use isn't allowed use in this area. We are here really more for the dimensional relief, which is the front yard, the front yard, rear yards, side yards, and the parking, the parking reduction. But again, it's still at one-to-one. It's important to note that there was a community meeting on this building about, about two months ago now, a month and a half ago. The ward counselor, Anthony Calglioandro, was also present. I believe he's here today. And he is here today. My understanding is that while there were some people that had some trepidation about building on an empty lot, that indeed we, we were able to cut down the number of units. And I, I'm hoping that we had a compromise. I believe Counselor Calglioandro is in support of it today. I can tell you that there's a letter submitted. City Hall is in favor of it. You have a letter on the mayor's behalf in your package. That being said, I don't want to go beyond my three minutes. Thank you.
Are there any other proponents? Would the ward counselor like to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Commission. So before I begin, there were some people here that wanted to speak in opposition to this, and I just want to list their names. Elbe-
Or a proponent?
These are opponents, I'm sorry. Elbero Salazar-
We're still on the proponent section, though. The, if they're opponents, I'll have to close the proponent side of the hearing and then go to opponent.
Sure. So what I'm here to do today is-
Wait one second. Are you a proponent or an opponent?
Can I just speak as the ward counselor?
Not in a public hearing, I'm sorry. So I have to say, is it a proponent or an opponent? Seeing the hearing none, I'll close that side of the hearing for a proponent. We are now in the opponents.
I'm neither. I'm here to share information with this commission.
Okay.
With the board.
So you're speak, you, you are speaking on behalf of others as opponents? Am I correct?
I'm speaking on behalf of a community meeting that we had over a month ago.
What? Let them go after, I'll have you speak after the hearing, I'm sorry. Are there any opponents that wish to speak? If you could press the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Anthony Lasano, twenty-three Carlton Street, Riviera, Mass. I'm opposed to this project because of the height of the project, the scale of the project. I don't understand why every project requires a variance. And obviously, fifty units, I don't think there's a apartment building that big anywhere in the area. It's a residential area. One spot per unit. I don't know anybody in the neighborhood that was for the project. We did have a meeting in the parking lot. I don't consider that really a meeting. And I'm, I'm opposed to it.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other opponents?
Mary Ann Picati. I live at thirty-nine Birch Pond Drive in Sogas. I was in attendance on that meeting in July on the thirteenth. And we were in the parking lot. And at that time, we were introduced to a forty-eight-unit apartment, studio apartments. And I believe the Olympia Development knew that most of us were concerned with the parking. And to, to complain about, there's going to be, they said that two stores were gonna be in the front. And at that time, no one knew what type of stores were gonna create more places to park. We do have, on the other side of this building, is another area that has commercial. And those employees parked down a little further where there's no meters, okay? And the residents at A twenty-six Broadway never really have the opportunity to park in front of their residents. But my question is, they knew that we were kind of upset with that large of a building. And then when the new papers came, it extended to fifty units. And at the time, you know, when we were complaining about the forty-eight, he said, well, we can put warehouses there. Would you like that? And I don't know at this point if I feel that warehouses would be better. It would create less parking. I, I, I just can't see, we were so upset and asking for variances where it's twenty feet to fifteen, and now the dumpsters have to even go closer to those other residents in the back. I don't know. I really wish the panel would take in consideration. Of all the traffic that goes further down at the end, that rotary is documented with accidents left and right. And I don't know, I, I see the drawback of going higher than lower. So I just wanted to know where the compromise and where it changed.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else in opposition?
Good evening.
Could you push the microphone down just and speak into directly? Thank you.
My name is Patricia Capasala, and I am the homeowner of Rip nineteen Rose- My name is Patricia Capasala, and I am the homeowner of 19 Rosetti Street. I am opposed to the construction of any and all variances to this project. When the neighbors met on July 13th, 2022, everyone was against the first proposal of a five-story, 48-unit apartment building. We were told a light in traffic study would be done to diagnose the impact of the building. The congestion on Broadway in our area, especially in the hours of when people are going to and from work, and when children are going to and from school, is extremely heavy, leading to gridlock on a daily basis. It can take me five minutes to get out of Rosetti Street during these times. This project will affect parking in the surrounding neighborhood at all times. In today's world, most adults have their own vehicle, one car per person. That includes individuals of all ages, even teenagers. There will not be enough parking for such a monstrosity of a building that does not fit at that location. Driving down Broadway, approximately 14 apartment buildings, approximately 12 out of three or four stories high, 12 out of the approximate 14. Within eyesight of this property, there is no structure larger than three or four stories in height. Why squeeze in a building that looks out of place in this neighborhood of many homes? We are a neighborhood and want to keep it that way. We want to see this area thrive, but this type of structure with all of these variances is too much for this area. I hope you will consider the neighbors of this area and not allow the variances to pass. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you.
Okay.
Hello, my name is Alex Capasala. I'm the, excuse me, homeowner of 25 Rosetti Street. My main concern, I want to ask the panel here, is we've had major flooding issues on Rosetti Street. We've had, we've been in contact with the city, and we've had city engineers come down to the, to the street, and they diagnosed it as the pipes are very old, they're very small compared to, you know, today's world and where they should be. So my concern is, you know, is this going to impact the street where, you know, my sister's car was totaled on the street completely, and I had about $5,000 worth of damage to my vehicle parked on the street. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other opponents? Seeing in here, now I'll close that side of the, please step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Excuse me, I may be a little nervous. My name is Gabby Vasquez. I'm talking on behalf of my mother too, Melita Pineda. We actually live on A 13 Broadway, Riviera, so legit right next to this building. Even me, our concerns are looking at it, it's like taking kind of of our house already if we look at that little street where the people are, like the kind of people. So it's like, why is that little part already kind of taken of our house if we haven't even like been, we didn't go to the meeting that was placed, obviously because of family reasons, we weren't able to go. But I just think about, Abraham Lincoln School is right there as well. My little sister goes there, they walk to school and everything. The building will be blocking the whole view if the, if our, like, my little sisters want to walk to school as well, if they want. Kids are going in and out, like it's a transit already. Broadway's already congested with everything. 8:00 AM by 8:00 AM, right there, that Broadway is already packed from Squire Road all the way to like going down to Chelsea. We have to be leaving extra, maybe even an hour earlier if we have to go. Just getting out of our parking lot, we have about five cars in there. It's like, we have to be sharing another driveway with another house so we can be able to get out. Having this building right next to us, we can't see anything. We already have one house right next to us. From the back, I see all the houses as well. Having this huge building already, especially with kids around the neighborhood, I see kids everywhere walking around with dogs, their parents and everything. And I just think this is a kind of a project that is just gonna be too much commotion, especially for a street like Broadway where we have restaurants, we have schools, we have every type of business, and I just think it's, me and my family are opposed to this project for now.
Thank you. Is there any other position? Any other opponents? Counselor, you're welcome to speak at this time.
Thank you very much. So I just want to share the details of the community meeting that was held at the end of June. When this was proposed, it was a 48-unit, as you've already heard, with two retail spots on the bottom floor. And the residents of that area did not want the retail spot, so I'm guessing that's where they're gonna put the extra units. Before I even get started, I just want to state that Pomona Street, Carlton Street, Rosetti Street, Prince Street, and Broadway, there was, I've spoken with members of that every street, and I haven't honestly spoken to one person who wants to see this building go up. But I do also understand that he can build by right, and it makes me nervous of what will come back on the city. But I know that the people do not want this there. The, there was originally supposed to be a sixth floor, but not of units. There was supposed to be a doghouse coming out of the roof with a recreational area. The residents did not want that either. I just heard Counselor D'Ambrosio say they are not needing a sixth floor. Let's see. The 50 parking spots, the one-to-one parking is definitely an issue. It's obviously a big issue with the residents who live there. They're very nervous about cars parking on their streets. They're already having a huge issue with the Mayan Institute, people from parking, apartment complexes parking on their streets. As Alex mentioned, the flooding in that area is terrible. I actually just filed a motion for Carlton Street. They're having water coming out of their backyards during some of the storms. It's pretty nasty over there. Also, it was discussed that there would only be one car per lease, which would not give them the ability to obtain residential parking stickers or visitor parking passes. So I just, I just wanted to go over what was spoken about that day. I did speak to just about all the residents, if not all of them, that day. And, you know, the unfortunate truth is, a property owner owns a property. They can build a lot of things. They're coming here because they need relief in certain areas. But I just, again, I want to reiterate that I know the neighborhood does not want this whatsoever, and that's the information from that day. Thank you very much.
If you could just state, turn the microphone on.
So I'd just like to state that the two primary concerns that we heard were park, were parking, congestion, and then the water issue. With regard to the water issue that's there, this developer's committed to fixing any of the underground issues that are problematic now. As you all know, the city of Riviera relies heavily on new development to upgrade infrastructure in the area that's being developed. And the reason for that is that the city usually just doesn't have enough money to do the entire city all at once, to upgrade underground pipes that may be already damaged or crushed. That is one of the collateral benefits of any upgrade in development to an area, is that usually the water issues are greatly remediated, not, not minimally greatly remediated because all the piping and the engineering is brand-new. And, and what I mean by brand-new, not just, not just in the sense of new, new materials, but new in terms of code requirement. Anything that's there now may have been 10, 20, 30 years old, so the code compliance is 10, 20, 30-year-old, 30-years-old, out of place. Anything that's gonna be done there with regard to water, piping, and plumbing is gonna be brought up to 2022 code requirements, which is a significant upgrade, I'd suggest to the board, and probably a significant upgrade to what's there now. Again, I, we talk about the parking, the automobiles. I think it's important to note, this is a GB district. It's a general business district, which means that any, most types of commercial businesses can be erected there. And let's be candid, this is a 21,000-square-foot lot. It's half an acre almost, a little bit, little bit under of a half an acre. And it's in a general business area, which means a mini mall, some sort of restaurant, some sort of laundromat, all those uses in the general business are allowed. And we know they're allowed without any special permit because they exist up and down Broadway as we speak right now. And as this board knows, when you're looking at traffic, any commercial use, any type of store, any type of restaurant, any type of business that's open between 8:00 AM and 11:00 PM, is gonna bring a lot more traffic than 50 cars that are leaving at 8:00 AM or coming back at 6:00 PM after work, right? So I think if you look at the science and the study, the science behind this, it's clear that commercial enterprises, commercial structures bring a lot more traffic to an area than a residential. And I understand that sometimes people don't want to see change. We talked about, about the height, the five stories. That's, that's, we're not asking for relief on height because it's five stories. That's what it's always been on Broadway. At the end of the day, people don't want to see change. But the reality is, that funeral home is moving out of there, that corner is changing, and this lot is going to be built. And we have a developer from inside the city, who's from the city, with family that lives in the city, including his sons, who is planning a project that's gonna significantly upgrade that lot. And not only upgrade it, I suggest that it's going to be the first domino of many, hopefully, to repair that end of Broadway. I think one of the things that came out during that community meeting is that folks on that end of Broadway feel a little bit neglected. They feel that there's not enough flowering up on the lights, that the lights aren't taken care of.
Counselor, this is the zoning board of appeals, not the city council.
I, I get it.
You're going on like you're trying to sell this project.
Listen, I, I'm just, there's been a lot of policy arguments made against, and I'm just saying that if you look at why the economic director and city hall's in favor of it, is that there are a lot of pluses. I get it, people don't want to see change. But this is an open lot. It's 21,000 square feet, and any type of commercial enterprise that you put there is gonna have more traffic. That's just the facts.
Counselor, are you, are you willing to go back to the people and listen to their concerns? To me, it didn't seem like they were, the concerns were listened to or raised, or listened to because just by, based on what the Ward Counselor stated, and all of the abutting streets are opposed to it.
That's not correct, right? There were two other points. There was a sixth floor, which was removed, and then there was first-floor commercial, which was removed. So, so the project was modified from that initial hearing. It is not the same project. But if I can have a moment and just talk to Mr. DeSessary. So again, in looking at the size of the project, the fact that we took the sixth floor off and changed the first floor, it becomes a question of alternative commercial uses for the lot. And so at this point, we'd ask that the ZBA vote on this particular project, knowing that there is support from the economic director and city hall for the reasons I stated.
The, the hearing has been closed? Were you late, or?
Well, we gotta talk just like all that traffic, okay?
By raise of hands, are you in favor or opposed?
Well, I'm opposed.
Okay, then it's, if you want to come up and state your name and address just for the record and that you're opposed.
Joe Nicolao. NCH, I N E O, A 25 Broadway, Riviera, Mass.
That's it? She got it, for the record. What is the will of the members here? So you wanna, what's the motion? Motion to approve? Motion to deny? Motion to approve? Is there a second? There's no second?
Yes or no?
For a motion to approve? Is there a motion to deny? Is there a second?
Yes.
Ask for a roll call.
Shall the zoning board of appeals grant the relief requested to the petitioner, Mr. Hamdan? No. Mr. Lemina? No. Mr. Lopes? No. Mr. Pelton? No. And Chairman Tucker?
No.
No, the variances have been denied.
No further business. Our next meeting will be September 21st at 5:00 PM.